Not at all. Can I say, thanks?
Yeah, I don't know. I have kind of forgotten about that.
If you can find a better way, I'll call you.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Monday, August 22nd Eden Prairie Planning Commission meeting to order. Would ever please arise and say the Pledge of Allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. First item on our agenda tonight is actually the review and approval of the agenda. Anybody have any comments about the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion for approval.
I'll second.
And we have a second. Okay, that was a motion from Commissioner Grody and Commissioner Marcos made the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstand? Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the last planning commission meeting we had, held Monday, August 8th, 2022. Has anybody had any comments on the minutes from the last meeting? If so, let me know. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Kirk, move to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I think Commissioner Gooding beat us there to the punch at the end. Second by Commissioner Gooding. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we have one, two public hearings on the agenda this evening. The first one is a code amendment for signs. It's a request to amend the city code, Chapter 11, related to signs in the office, all town center, and all TOD and RM 2.5 zoning districts. Jeremy, would you like to run us through anything special here?
Thank you, Chair. Just briefly, I'll kind of hit the high points, and you're open to, of course, answer or ask any questions that I don't hit on. But what Steph is proposing tonight is changes to the sign code primarily impacting three zoning districts. The RM 2.5 zoning district, the office zoning district, and then the TOD town center zoning districts. And this ordinance is kind of phase two of our larger sign code change. You saw the phase one earlier this year, I believe, with the content neutrality, and then there'll be another phase coming in the next couple of months. What we were trying to do here is identify some areas that were lacking in our code, and we tried to bring those up to kind of address questions that we're receiving as part of Steph's review. The first one here is a relatively simple one for the RM 2.5 zoning district. For a multifamily building, residential structure, you're allowed six square feet of signage currently. What we're proposing is changing that to 25 square feet, and the idea here is to provide some additional signage so people can identify the building, and then identify where the garage parking is located, or the front entrance is located. And we didn't see the six square feet was adequate for those purposes. So we're expanding that to 25 square feet. And that is in line with what other cities allow. The, I think the smallest one, other cities other than Eden Prairie currently, was 24 square feet, and then all the way up to 75 square feet. So we're in line, but we're not being overly aggressive in terms of that signage. In the office zoning district, we're proposing some changes, and again, in response to some questions that we received over the, over the months in terms of what people are asking for, for their signage, for their buildings. We're proposing increasing the freestanding signs. So these are the monument or the pole signs adjacent to your, adjacent to your structure, from 50 square feet, which is allowed now to 80 square feet. And they were also proposing an increase to the wall signage on the larger walls. So larger wall being defined as a wall that's more than 2,500 square feet. That signage can increase 2% of the wall area up to 150 square feet. So again, trying to provide some more opportunities for our office users to identify their, their business and their structure. The wall signage for the multi-tenant building stays the same in the office zoning district. In the town center and the TOD zoning districts, that's where you see most of our changes. Excuse me here. That's where you see most of the changes in the, in the draft code. We're proposing adding regulations for freestanding signs for non-residential users in the town center and the TOD zoning districts, and that proposal is 80 square feet for a freestanding sign. If you, if your structure is on a corner lot, or you have two street frontages, the second street would be 36 square feet. For a residential building in those two zoning districts, we're proposing a 32 square foot signage, a freestanding sign. For wall signs, we're proposing 15% of the wall area for, and for larger walls, and those in these zoning districts, the larger walls are defined as more than 500 square feet. The signage allowed there is 75 square feet plus 5% of the, of the wall area. And again, the idea there with that scale is to, the larger the wall, the more signage you can have. So it's a, it looks, looks right. You have a large wall with a really tiny sign, it kind of looks a little goofy, to use a technical term. We're also proposing for residential uses in the, these two zoning districts, a residential wall sign of 25 square feet. And you recall, that's what we're proposing in the office, or excuse me, the RM 2.5 zoning district. So a residential multifamily buildings would have 25 square feet of signage. We're also proposing here a height-adjusted sign. So as a sign identifying the building is raised above, you know, to the upper floors, that sign can get bigger, and the idea there is as you look up, you know, the sign will look a bit smaller because of distance. So as it goes up, it can go bigger, up to 50 square feet is what we're proposing here. In this zoning district, with the goal of kind of a walkable, kind of neighborhood type of, type of feature, we're adding the ability to, we're proposing allowing sandwich boards, signs that you often see in the downtown area, identifying a sale, or, you know, just the daily beer special for a drinking establishment. So we're proposing adding that or allowing those with certain parameters, and then also allowing projecting signs. So people wouldn't necessarily need to go through the variance process or a PUD process to get those type of signage in our TOD and our town center zones. Those are the main kind of high points. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. I do apologize. We meant to give you a copy of the ordinance with the track changes, and that didn't make it in the packet, but I did email it earlier to you this afternoon, and it's also on your, on your drafts, or on your desk there. So be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Planner Bernhardt. Appreciate it. Commissioners, any questions for the city planner at this point in time? Talk about this.
Let me ask a question, Jeremy, for you personally. You're new to Eden Prairie, but you've obviously been around the track with other communities. How would you characterize, I mean, I think it was characterized in, in one of the reports that Eden Prairie is considered awfully conservative on signs. How would you, where would you place Eden Prairie in your kind of professional perspective now? Is it, you know, are we still pretty conservative? Are we kind of midway? Are we, you know, a little bit more lenient for signs? I'm trying to just get a feel for where we're at relative to other communities.
That's a very good question.
And I understand a difficult question to answer.
Appreciate that. What I can say is, from what I've gathered, Eden Prairie is very protective of its image, and it spends a lot of energy, and has a lot of pride in its built environment. So the buildings look very nice, the streetscapes look, I mean, top to bottom, very, there's a lot of pride in this community. But to answer your question, you don't get there by just being willy-nilly and allowing everything that's, that everyone wants. So I think the signage is, is one of the first things that you can kind of tell when a city does something a little out there. And I think that the draft that we're doing here is, is consistent with kind of the overall image of Eden Prairie, while not being too permissive. You're still kind of helping, I think, helping the business community along. And frankly, that's why we're here, is to listen to the business community and propose changes as they are appropriate, given kind of the overreaching goals of the comprehensive plan, and just the planning commission and council with their votes and actions over the years. So we're opening the door a little bit, especially on this item. A little bit later, we'll talk a little bit more about that, too. But I don't think we're being too permissive or too excessively open to any kind of attraction there.
That's what I'd hoped you'd say, because that was my feeling as well. I, I think our, our goal is, is to be reasonable to work with, but still, at least my personal opinion is, on the conservative side, because that's kind of Eden Prairie. And I think, I think I'm repeating in different words what you said, so.
Much more eloquently.
Yeah, right.
I, I welcome those words of wisdom, and I, I agree with everything that was said. I, I think that just being a little bit conservative, but also offering our retailers especially some additional opportunities for some signage makes sense. It's good for business. I, I'd like to bring up another point that was a sidebar, maybe when we had this phase one signage discussion, if my memory serves me right, and you won't remember the conversation, Jeremy, but other commissioners will. In the atmosphere of COVID that was started a couple of years ago, when we had Planner Klima on board, she told us that the city council did have kind of extended some leniency to the signage code enforcement for retailers that were really struggling to stay in business. And so I, I think enforcement was kind of pulled back a little bit. As a citizen, I certainly noticed many more non-conforming signs popping up along the roadway. Things, I, I think they're called feather signs, those ones that look like a banana, stand about 10 feet tall. I know those are non-conforming, and other things like that. And, and I think to the benefit of our retail community that kind of helped them maybe get back on their feet. I guess my, my curiosity is, is that kind of olive branch a goodwill gesture to our retail community, coming to a stop? Has it? Will it? Do you know? Or at what point are we in that enough of a rebound such that maybe we're going to be enforcing some of those non-compliant signs around town again?
I like to think that we always have a posture of helping the local business community, but in response to your, your question about the sign enforcement, my understanding is we're complaint-based. So we do look for complaints and, and go out and, and look for those type of offending signs.
Sure, okay. Very good. Well, I would, I would think that we wouldn't promote them, of course, and you're not.
No, we don't promote. No, certainly not.
Okay, but we don't have a, a paid position that goes out to search the town for non-conforming signs? That's my understanding.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay, okay. And I don't think any of us are volunteering for that job, which is true. Yep, yep. Okay, good. Well, I, I noticed that there were a couple of things in your language that made a lot of sense about your sandwich boards, particularly not blocking sidewalks, which is pretty obvious, but we, we certainly don't want to make people step out into an aisle or a parking stall to get around a sandwich board. I'm looking at your, it's still part of the staff report, it's not part of the language, but you used not interfering with the required pedestrian pathway. And so as soon as I see that word "required," I'm wondering, gee, where is that required, and what width is that? Do I have to call an architect or not? And so that might be a tough little definition to convey to the reader, if, if not within the language.
Sure.
Just pointed notification there. I'm also curious as to why the sandwich boards and other things are in the office district. You know, anything non-residential, it's going for. Typically, office users don't need to post a sandwich board outside. Isn't why you included that zoning district?
You know, that may have slipped, slipped my attention. The intention with the, with the free, with the sandwich boards are primarily for the town center and the TOD, which has a mix of uses, but we, we wanted to allow it for that whole zoning district, and necessarily for the office zoning district. So if that's the case, then I can certainly look at that before it goes to planning, or, excuse me, city council.
Okay, yeah, one thing to look at. Then I have two other minor comments on, let's see, your draft language, page three of five. At the top, it talks about, where you talked about the corner lots, having the main street frontage, square footage, and then on the other side, you can have 36 square feet of another sign. There's a follow-up sentence in the code that says that no freestanding sign may be closer than 300 feet to another freestanding sign. So, you know, 300 feet, of course, that's a football field in my head. And so I'm thinking of a corner lot, and having two signs on the two streets be a football field apart seems a long way, rather excessive. And if some retailer has a small corner lot, it seems like we're really restricting that second sign. Am I misunderstanding something, or is that a fair assessment of the situation?
That's a fair assessment of the situation, Mr. Chair. We, we went with the 300 feet because of, that provided, we thought adequate distance without having some sign clutter on, on a corner lot. We can certainly look at that, but I don't think, I don't think that that's too restrictive. I think that does allow our larger lots to have, with multiple street frontages, allow freestanding signs.
All right. Appreciate that. And the last thing I have is just talking about the location of some signs, and you have to know what kind of a street you're on to know what the rules are on. It says, you know, "When located along a collector street, local or private roadway, maximum height may not exceed..." dot, dot, dot. So can you confirm that our online city code has enough navigational options for a user to click on a roadmap of Eden Prairie and have it, each road defined as to whether or not it's a collector, or arterial, or local street?
I know that a comprehensive plan does. So that, and that can change from every 10 years or so. So there is resources available to the user to identify what, what type of road that they're on.
Good. Okay, some communities don't have that, so I appreciate that knowledge being available for all. Okay. Those are my questions. Other commissioners, any more questions? Okay, well, as a matter of administrative clarity, this is a public hearing. We don't have anybody in the audience right now. So if anybody wants to move to close the public hearing, I think we'll do that first.
So move.
Thank you. Got a motion from Commissioner Grody to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Taylor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, public hearing is closed. Any other reflections? If not, we'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to amend the approval for the code amendment relating to the sign code based on recommendations from the staff report dated August 22nd, 2022, and attached draft sign code language.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Gooding. Anybody want to second that motion?
Second.
Take a second from Commissioner Kirk. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, next is our second public hearing. It's also a code amendment for temporary outdoor sales. It's a request to amend the city code to allow temporary sales events for retailers. And again, this is a public hearing, and Planner Bernhardt, if you wouldn't mind taking us through this issue.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, what we're proposing here with this text amendment is to kind of create another opportunity for our business community to have an event. Currently, we have temporary and permanent, temporary outdoor displays, and you've seen those in town. I believe many of the hardware stores, they have the permanent ones for the storage of their mulch for sales. There's a, technically a temporary outdoor display at the mall with the Untied's vegetable produce stand, and that has an exception to the time. That's why it's technically temporary, even though it's there for many of the months. So we have those opportunities the business can, can use, and in those situations, they're allowed a certain amount of their, of their display area based on the base area of their building. And then they're also allowed to encroach into the required parking spaces a certain amount. I think it's 0.05%. So 0.05% of the parking spaces can be used for this outdoor display. And, and while that's helpful, I think, to the business community, what we're looking for is maybe another opportunity for a sales event. You see these in some communities, and this gets to your point, Mr. Commissioner Kirk, about kind of opening the door a little bit. But what we, what we're looking to do here is add a temporary sales event. What we're thinking is, it's a, it's up to a four-day event, four times a year, for, and the intent here is a bona fide special event, you know, grand opening sale, or a sidewalk sale for, for some of our businesses. A true special event, not a perpetual event that happens throughout the year. And so what we've done is, we tried to create a, create an opportunity for these, for, for businesses and all retailers, frankly is how it's written, for any retailer here in town, including those that sell out of an industrial zoning district, where they're allowed by, or by, by permit to, to have a retail component. We're proposing allowing a retail sales event, a temporary sales event. The retailers, so there are some particular kind of, kind of regulations that we've imposed that we suggest here to avoid kind of really opening the door and having kind of a little bit of chaos. Retailers can sell what they sell on, on the property. And so if, for example, Shields sells, wants an outdoor event, they can sell what they sell inside. If they don't sell hot tubs, they can't sell hot tubs, which you may have seen in some tent sales and things like that. So the idea here is retailer on property can sell what they sell inside. It's a true special event, that's a true sale. Each event, as I said before, is four, up to four days long, and we're proposing four events per calendar year, and that's per business. And, and I know Commissioner Many had asked a question about, should it be per business, or should it be per parcel? And actually, I even spoke a second ago, it's per parcel. So you have a parcel that may have six or seven retailers, that parcel has to coordinate which special events are applied to for that, for that parcel. Because the idea is, we don't want a perpetual special event, you have a tent up in the parking lot all the time. And again, that detracts, I think, a little bit from the Eden Prairie pride that I've kind of witnessed in my short time here. We also, kind of in an attempt to encourage these special events in, in some degree, we're, we're not proposing any limitations of how much parking you can impact. You know, the, the outdoor display areas that I mentioned earlier, you're, you can encroach into required parking spaces about 0.05 of, you know, of the spaces. We're not proposing any such regulation here. And the idea being, this is a relatively short event, infrequently throughout the year, and the idea is, is that would be self-pleasing within the, the business community. They're not going to use the required spaces for this type of event when they really need it. The idea is draw more business to their, to their site. We are restricting the size to 4% of the, of the area of the business to have some limitations, but we do think the size limit, and the frequency, and what can be sold on the property will limit, will provide the opportunity, but also limit kind of, kind of a overspread of our goal here. And so, as I mentioned a little bit before, it is a little bit different than the outdoor display events that we've talked about. We're just trying to provide another opportunity for the, the retail community. Just on your, on your screens here, there's a small image showing what 4% of those businesses would look like. It's just not a huge amount, but it is adequate to draw some attention to that business for, for that period of time. We did receive a comment from Representatives of Eden Prairie Center. They would prefer some, a little bit more flexibility, I think it's safe to say. They'd also asked that you hold any action on this item until they have a chance to review it. We look at it as, this is a first step, to see if it works. If it doesn't, then we can widen it and allow more events, or have, have it based on per business versus per property. But I think this is a good starting point. In our research with other, other cities, particularly those cities with malls, we're not seeing a lot of these transient type businesses in the other malls, either allowed or even asked for. So I think from a staff perspective, we're confident in, in opening the door to this type of event at this level. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Gooding?
Sort of a takeoff on what the mall asked, but maybe a little bit different. I know in the part of the country I grew up in, which was the East Coast, a place might have a George Washington's birthday sale over four days, outside, under a tent. And then they would, they might sell a special version of something they don't normally carry in the store, but of similar nature. And maybe, maybe keep it simple, say, at the mall luggage store. Okay, so they have a special thing that comes in for that event that's luggage, but not what they sell in the store every day. And then, you know, they would knock it down and pick it up and set up for that four-day sale over the weekend, the day before and the day after. So when you include knock-down and set-up time within the four-day window, if you're taking advantage of a holiday sale, you're, you're pretty much making them sit it up in the dark and take it down in the dark, for lack of a better term. And then how restrictive is the language on, is it type of product or the actual product they sell inside that has to come outside?
Sure. Mr. Chair, if I may, the, the intent is the type of product, not the brand. So if, if Macy's, for example, sells luggage, but they don't sell American Standard luggage, and they want to sale, that would be fine. We would, we would do that. I didn't want to go into that level of detail in the draft, in ordinance here. But that's the idea. It's not brand, it's type. So luggage is luggage, fishing pole to fishing pole, that type of thing. In terms of the, the setup takedown, yeah, it's tight, and certainly in the, you know, half the year, it's dark. But I, I think that that was adequate enough to allow them the ability to kind of, they, they have the same four days anyone else has, so they have to kind of focus their, their goals within that period. So that's how we kind of look at it from, from this ordinance standpoint.
Okay.
I have a question.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Marcos, yes, please.
Can businesses ask for special exemptions to this? If a business, like the mall, had multiple vendors that wanted to have these sales, and they ended up having five that year or something, would you guys be open to working on kind of a business-by-business case to allow, you know, exceptions once in a while, or is that just totally off the table if they don't meet these expectations?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Marcos, I don't think anything is ever off the table. What we're doing is, we're adding something in the code that allows, with certain parameters that you use. The, my understanding is the options are, they could apply for a variance if they needed to, or in the case of the mall, there's a PUD amendment, or excuse me, a PUD agreement that governs much of that. There potentially could be a, an amendment to that process, which is a public hearing and a public process, but those are options. Anytime you put something in code, you can always ask for a variance.
Thank you. Do we think this ordinance would, would it be polite of us to notify landlords of multi-tenant retail buildings in town? I don't know what that is, 20? Because this is certainly a game changer for them, potentially, but it, it forces a tracking duty on them that they may not be aware of when this ordinance passes. And so one of their tenants calls up, you know, City Hall one day and asks for the permit, and even though they need a signature from the landlord, the landlord may be caught off guard the first or second time this happens. So I'm just wondering if there's some educational outreach that should be done after this ordinance is passed to kind of prepare the landlords for this tracking obligation of theirs?
Mr. Chair, yeah, certainly I think there'd be some outreach in terms of the business community. I don't know if it'd be specific to the multi-tenant buildings necessarily, but it certainly could. But the intent with their acknowledgement of the application is that they're informed upfront before anyone comes up. So the idea there is if one user of their six users comes in and gets all four special event permits throughout the year, the, the property owner should be aware of that at the time of application. And so that's the intent there. But yeah, certainly there's always opportunities for outreach and, and education.
Okay, all right. I have a specific question. On your language draft ordinance 5D, there's two sentences that talk about the size, and you went over this already for us, about the 4% rule of the user. The first sentence has the 4% in there, just talking in general. It looks like the implication is that a retailer would occupy the entire building in that sentence, even though it's not said. Because in the second sentence, you differentiate that by talking about multi- you differentiate that by talking about multi-tenant buildings. But it's the same four percent. So in fact, are both tests sentences required? Or could you just say four percent? Whether you're a single tenant or multi-tenant, it's still four percent?
The intent there, Mr. Chair, is to differentiate between the different type of opportunities that are out there. There are multi-tenant buildings that not all of the tenants are retailers, and you don't want to punish or or provide additional display area or sales area because some of the uses aren't retail. But also, it really started to kind of come into fruition when we looked at the industrial retailers, you know, where up to fifteen percent of an industrial building can be used for retail sales. We wanted the four percent to be of the retail sales, not of the large industrial building.
Got it. That makes all the sense in the world now. So our large office building across the mall, Windsor Plaza, whatever it is, multi-story office building, but it's got some retail down below. So if FedEx wanted to get a permit for this, it'd be four percent of that ground floor retail space, not the five-story office building.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. That makes a lot of, a lot of good sense. Commissioners, did we, I don't know if we want to give any more consideration to the email we received today from the general manager of the Eden Prairie Center, or not? I have a tendency to agree with Planner Barnhart's recommendation. That is a special building in town, special meaning unique, it's extra-large. They're seeking some additional flexibility. I don't know if I have enough information to pass any additional language at this point in time, absent of staff's further review. Does anybody agree or disagree?
I mean, I think what we've kind of heard is that this is just one step, and there's nothing that wouldn't would prevent us from going back if they requested something to make changes in the future. So I don't see why we would need to hold this up for that, personally.
Okay, all right.
I I agree with that.
You agree with that? Okay, good.
I think, you know, first off, there is a way to get around that, a variance process. And secondly, you know, we're, we're only advising the city council. There's still another step.
Sure, sure.
Process here.
Yeah, yeah. Commissioner Gooding, do you?
I I have some concerns about it. You know, the mall, all malls today are struggling.
Yes.
So if it's restrictive enough that you couldn't, if it's limited to, and I've got to really understand this, but if their four percent is of the building, and I'm asking Jeremy this so I don't go off on the wrong track.
Mr. Chair, yeah, it would be four percent of the retail spaces in that building. So I didn't envision is the the mall has a common space with, I think, actually, it's all retail. So four percent of that space would be allowed.
So if they wanted to, if they had something special and wanted to include multiple stores, they'd have a real space issue trying to do a special outside that involved a third of the stores in the mall. Within their four percent requirement, they'd be really crunched the way I take this.
Mr. Chair, I actually, I look at it the opposite. They they have a significant amount of square footage. Four percent of that could be out in on their property, and it could it could allow each one of their uses in inside this big tent, for example. And so I don't know all the mall or all the stores in the mall, but, you know, the Gap and and all these other ones, they could go and be part of a an event for the common area. And I think there's a great opportunity for an event.
My my only concern, and I'm struggling with how you apply the four percent to the mall, is that if they wanted to hold a big day event, that they'd have to pick and choose their retailers, which wouldn't be great for their business, and malls struggle. You know, it's no secret. And we, I think we don't want to do anything that would incentivize or help other businesses in the community versus the ones that are at that mall. That would be my concern, is that a smaller retailer, you know, or some other location, a Best Buy, for lack of a better term, you know, outside, and then you got ones in the mall. And, you know, if they tried to do a multi-retail event, are they going to be disadvantaged versus the standalone store? And and I think that's, from my read, that's where they're coming from to or thinking about it. And I think I'm very sensitive to that.
I would suggest, too, that the mall is hundreds of thousands of square feet in size. And so if they had, as an example, a quarterly sale for season, you know, spring, summer, winter, fall, whatever it was, a blowout sale, or whatever they want to call it, they could probably accumulate, you know, tens of thousands of square feet in the parking lot and have
Okay.
Many retailers have a small kiosk or something like that.
Maybe ask this a question separately. Right. So if if the mall wanted to do it, and they totaled up all of their retail, the four percent is would be all of their retail, not just the individual people participating in it. So they could count every retail space they had in the mall to do that, if they wanted to.
Yes.
Yeah. And what I what was just going through in my mind is, say they wanted to do an event, and only half the retailers wanted to be part of it, those retailers would actually have an advantage.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's that's kind of what I'm trying to get.
Yeah.
Through my, yeah, all right.
There may be a nuance about the little kiosk carts
Yeah.
out there, you know, guy selling cell phone covers, you know, what what participation does he have, if any? But that's that's a nuance that.
I guess my two cents on this is that Ms. Litwin has a reasonable request. I don't see any urgency on the part of the commission to force this tonight. I think that retail is very soft. Our economists are telling me that it's going to be softer in 2023. If we can at least give them and all a branch some time to give us some input, I think that would be prudent on the part of the commission.
So you're you're
I'm saying delay it.
So you're saying, yeah, continue.
Let them give us some input.
All right, all right, good. All right. Well, I tell you what, while we ponder that statement, why don't we think about closing the public hearing? Nobody's in the audience this evening. So I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on this item.
So move.
Okay, motion from Commissioner Grody?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Sherwood, I think I heard first. So anybody, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed? Okay, the public hearing is closed on this item. All right. So any other opinions on that matter, whether or not we just, if the commissioners agree that this is a good idea, there might be a motion to approve this, and then take up the matter of the mall's concerns separately with staff and or subsequent revisions to the zoning ordinance, or before city council, in fact. Or, as Commissioner Sherwood stated, let's put this on the continuance and let this get digested by staff and have them come back later.
I have a question for for Jeremy. Is there any urgency that has been communicated to you or known within the city that we don't know about on getting this passed?
What, Mr. Chair, what triggered this originally was a request by Shields more more recently. We've heard kind of questions over the past. But Shields is asking for a special event in right before the the holiday season. The delay of this, we likely won't have a meeting on on September 12. So we're looking at the end of September earlier. So council would see it in October for the second reading. We would be in danger of allowing that type of use. But let me be first upfront, I would much rather, as a as a recommend recommend recommender to a planning commissioner, to if you're not comfortable with an ordinance, by all means, table it. But I think what she's asking for, what the the Upriver Center, excuse me, Eden Prairie Center is asking for, staff is not there yet to support. We talked a little bit ago about opening the door a little bit, about allowing business community some opportunities. And this is as far as we're willing, from a staff perspective, that we think is appropriate. Four events, four days over a year. We we do think that's an opportunity for for the businesses to 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 do some sort of outreach and some sort of events without having a perpetual sign or perpetual tent up in their in their property all year long. And so that's why staff is recommending approval based on what we have here. And to Ms. Marco's point earlier, we can always come back. And if if the business community, if A, this is working and business community wants more, we can certainly add more time, more events per year. But I think this is where staff is is willing to support at this stage.
And just reading this in detail, one of her comments was, for temporary outdoor sales, we'd like to be able to feature any product or service permitted for sale in the shopping center, not only products currently sold within the building. And I think our earlier discussion, to me, indicated that that would probably be allowed. In other words, it if if I I agree with the position that that staff is taking, that I think what is sold in these special events should be part of the core business of the retailer, not a completely separate business, a completely separate product line or something.
Right.
And so I guess maybe it's hard to understand this, but to me, the intent of what we're talking about, I, yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to be the same brand or the same exact product, but it has to be part of the core business of that retailer, consistent with.
Probably should not be a competitor's product.
Right.
Sure.
And and at the end of the day, there still could be an opportunity to submit a variance, correct?
Variance or PUD amendment, yes.
Yeah.
And not to add one more twist to this already complex situation, but I think it'll only take a very short amount of time to realize that if I'm the landlord, I'm the gatekeeper of this. I can assign my own policies. I can restrict all my tenants to say, no, you're not having an individual twenty-five percent of my four per year. I'm going to host or allow four of these per year, and I'm going to make all the retailers have this available to them. I'm not going to let my end cap tenant take one out of four or two out of four, and the other retailers don't have an opportunity for that same feature. So as a landlord, I'm going to realize real quick that I'm the gatekeeper, and and I can almost, I don't want to say auction off or sell, but negotiate with my tenants as to who gets the right, whose permit I'm going to sign off on. And I'm going to think more globally about the whole health of my entire center, which is probably a good thing. But you see what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
As opposed to a tenant asking for permission to the city, the landlord is going to realize he's the gatekeeper for this and kind of twist things up a little bit with the way he wants to run his center. Commissioner Gooding?
Jeremy, in this letter from the the mall, the Nancy Litwin, she said she just found out about it, and it's dated the 18th of August.
No, it's dated the 22nd.
22nd, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay. The 22nd. So when did, was there any outreach to the mall before this was drafted? And when did you all outreach versus the date?
Sure. Mr. Chair, there wasn't no, there was no specific outreach to the mall on this item. The previous signage, there was. Frankly, we felt that we've gotten a number of questions over the years from the mall and from other users about this type of event. And we felt that this was a new opportunity, and we frankly didn't anticipate any pushback in terms of what we're offering, knowing that, again, could changes could occur. So that is on me. I didn't reach out as much as I should have. But frankly, I was a little bit surprised that there was some, there's some challenges with it, just because
Well, some, yeah, I guess.
There were, there were places. I'm not going to concede that. It's just, we're providing some additional opportunity, and we felt that that was beneficial.
Mr. Barnhart, I want to make sure I understood your earlier statement, that this was precipitated by a request from Shields. So am I to understand that if we do not approve this today, we cause some harm to Shields?
I'm sorry, say that again?
If we do not approve this tonight, am I to understand we are causing some harm to Shields?
So Shields, we were able to approve an event for them under the temporary outdoor display event. The caveat for Shields, though, is the how the Untied's vegetable produce stand was approved, is they use almost all of their outdoor display area for the entire mall, and they use all of their required parking impact for the entire mall. So the only way that we could approve Shields is a relatively small kind of footprint for an event, and they had to not impact any parking. So basically, with Shields' first event, if this does not get approved, will be kind of in their kind of loading dock area, which I don't think is ideal for them. So that's the impact if we hold off on this approval.
Thank you.
One more question, I guess, and maybe I'm going to go back in my memory for this. Sears owned their land and their building, which is where Shields was built. So is Shield technically not part of the mall?
That's a phrase I'm not quite going to concede on. They are part of the mall, but they are their own separate lot. And so they have their own separate four percent that they're allowed.
Okay, so they they are, in this concept, they're different than the mall.
Okay.
Fair statement?
They're a separate parcel.
Okay.
That's what I'll say.
Yeah, I think we'd have to get into some real estate legal definitions. I think they kind of minimize, if you will, the larger mall. And and so whether it's a leasehold in one structure with one entity as landlord, or it's condominiumized, I I don't think that should matter to the zoning ordinance. That's my personal opinion, but if that requires some legal interpretation, I'm all for it.
Mr. Chair, kind of guessing where you're going, so there are, I believe, six main parcels at the mall, Target, Shields, Kohl's, the mall proper. Those are all separate parcels. So Shields can have an event on their property with their own tent, Target, same thing, at the same weekend.
Okay.
Kohl's.
That's where I was going.
Yeah, so they each can have their own, and the mall, pardon me, the mall proper can have their own event also.
Okay, got it.
All at the same time.
Got it.
So in theory, the mall area with its six parcels can have 24 events in a given year, which is almost half the year, half the weekends.
Okay.
I think we should approve. Yeah, okay. Well, if you think that, then we'll allow you a pathway to that motion, Commissioner Grody.
We move to recommend approval for code amendment related to the outdoor sales events based on recommendations from the staff report dated August 22, 2022, and the attached draft signed code language.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table by Commissioner Grody to approve as presented by staff. Would anybody, is there any further discussion on that, or?
I need a second.
A second by Commissioner Kirk. Okay, any other final discussion on that before we vote? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, the motion passes. One, two, three, four, five, six to one, if I counted right.
Yep.
Okay, anybody abstaining? I'm sorry. No. Okay, thank you. Six to one, it passes. Thank you, Planner Barnhart, for leading us through those two public hearings. Next on the agenda, is there a planner's report?
No, sir.
Okay. Members of the commission, are there any members' reports? Okay, I would take a motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn the planning commission meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Marcos. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I'm going to go with Commissioner Grody on that one. All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned. Thank you. Good evening. Do you need to be unplugged?
Yes, thank you.